Meeting called in order to matter, please call and roll.
Councilwoman Persson's Augustine.
I'm here.
Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilwoman Grover.
Councilwoman Torres.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Here.
Councilwoman Sedanion.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Yeah.
President Paul.
Here, uh, seven, president of, uh, clerk. This is a regular conference of the city council as incorporated in the annual meeting notice of 2013, which will file in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2012, and sent to the Star Legend Home News Tribute in compliance with the provision of the open public meeting law of New Jersey. Now, at this time, we open with public speaking. Any resident or taxpayer like to address the city council in any manner, please step forward, stick the name and address for the record. Once again, uh, any resident or taxpayer like to address the city council in any manner, please step forward, seeing none, close that portion of me. Uh, just before we get started, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we have a, we need to schedule a special hearing for ABC, uh, on the second week of April, uh, for Envy and Jersey Girl. There's been some altercation taking place at those two sites, uh, so we need to set up a special meeting, uh, for that special hearing. Uh, the first week of April, this first, um, excuse me, second weekend on, we can, second week of April, the first week of April, Rocco will not be here, so we need to schedule the second week in April. Uh, any thoughts on that? I'd like to see if we can set it up, uh, on a Tuesday, uh, the second, uh, at seven o'clock, seven thirty, whatever you guys tell me, which you guys have a view.
Yeah, that's the night, huh?
I think it's, let me do.
The same night as City Council?
Same night as City Council.
But isn't, uh, they don't have some meeting?
No, 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 we got, no, no, City Council. Uh, maybe we have, maybe we want to do it, hang on, look at my, I had figured that one out. Yeah.
That's the sign, that's the night.
Uh, the, the second week would be the night, that's the meeting we have. I don't think we should do it on the same night we have, have our city council meeting. So you guys want to do it that Monday, the eighth?
No.
What about the tenth? This is Wednesday.
No.
No good?
I, I'd be in favor of doing it the same night as City Council, to be honest with you.
What, what, you guys will do, you'll probably have to come in real early.
Yeah, I would do, but I was going to say that, right? Based on what you said, we can't do it like a seven, we won't have time to.
We won't have time, but you can't do it.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
About six thirty.
You want to do six thirty?
Six thirty would be good.
Six thirty, everybody, good? Six thirty?
What day is it?
Uh, that'll be the ninth, uh, at six thirty. Fair enough?
Mm-hmm.
Gone, gone, okay.
Which case you have, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Which case do we have?
Uh, it's going to be a case for Envy, you know, that, and then Club Envy, and then also Jersey Girl.
Jersey Girl.
Right, there've been some tough altercation at these two locations, uh, and they have informed me we need to have this special meeting, uh, right away. As you know, our regular ABC meeting is, I believe, is on the last Tuesday, uh, I'm going to excuse you, last Monday, other month, in April. Okay?
Do we, is that enough, an hour?
We're gonna have a meeting next week?
Yeah, yes, we have one next week, yeah. But we can't, we can't, they said it has to be a special, special hearing, so we gotta have.
Just, just confirming that the meeting, and thank you for rescheduling the meeting next week. The meeting will be at seven o'clock on Tuesday, uh, the 25th.
Uh, that's for, uh.
Next week.
ABC.
ABC, right.
March 25th.
The regular ABC meeting is next Tuesday at seven o'clock.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much for scheduling.
We, we okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure we're on the same schedule, because they want, six thirty, yeah, I mean, they're gonna advertise.
An hour will give us enough time, Mr. President?
I'm hoping, I would like to do, look, I would like to do it six o'clock, eight too, because I want to make sure we have enough time.
Plus seven o'clock.
Can we do six o'clock, guys? Can we pick it up at six o'clock?
I'm gonna do six fifteen.
Six fifteen?
I can, I can just say.
Uh, Councilwoman says she can do six fifteen.
I'm gonna go sixteen.
I give fifteen more minutes, I ended up there helping with, with the trial. One strikes, six fifteen?
All right, who's taking care of dinner tonight, I'm surprised?
Well, uh, you know, I'll, I'll think about it. Six fifteen?
Six fifteen.
Going once, going twice, six fifteen.
The same thing.
April nine?
Eight, 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 okay, six fifteen, guys. Uh, we'll, uh, we'll yield to the councilwoman, she says six fifteen, okay? Please, may I please search for, you know, time, because you know that's our same meeting for our, regular meetings, we want to get in and get out as quick as we can.
ABC.
The other thing, the other thing is, the other thing is, uh, the other thing is, guys, uh, if you'd be so kind to us, to me, uh, when we have in our meeting, uh, at the regular, uh, regular meeting in the chamber, uh, please refrain from coming up and giving your London notes or anything like that while we have conducted a meeting, because it distracts them to her. Uh, she has a handful of making notes and trying to read things, and when we come up and hand her something, uh, from the floor, it distracts, it distracts them from her, uh, it takes away her concentration. And also, if you don't mind doing me a favor, uh, when we doing our, uh, when we doing our resolution, uh, where someone come up and make a comment about us or to us, uh, I would appreciate it if you guys would make your comments, uh, you could, because you don't have to, you can, you don't have to make your comments towards whatever resolution is passed, uh, we're talking about. You can also make those comments about someone said something like you, then you can make comments about those resolution that we're, we're talking about also. So, uh, and rather than wait till the end of the meeting, especially when we doing a memorial service, because it distracts me, I had really kind of like, uh, forgotten and asked for the stand for the, for the memorial, so if we can do that, you have, you have plenty of time, uh, to, uh, you have plenty of time to, uh, to make your comments during the time that we make, when I ask you to make comments, when we doing the resolution, pass the resolution, then open up, do all, make all comments that you want. Fair enough, okay, do that for me? Thank you. Okay, I think I got everything out.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, let me show you, I, I think I follow what you're saying, but, um.
I think you should have.
During the public speaking, because different presidents have handled this differently over the years, so if someone comes up, you know, in public speaking and makes a comment I object to, uh, would you allow me to, uh, rebuttal at that time after the person finishes? Or is that something that you prefer that we don't do? I can, I, I'm okay either way, I just want to know how you feel about it. And let me, let me get finished by saying, it wasn't anything personal against me last time, but there were two speakers that made comments that in my opinion were totally out of order, offensive, uh, to some of our employees, and I really, I wasn't happy with it at all, and I didn't say anything because I wanted to know how the chair feels about those situations.
Two, two things I'm going to tell you right now, I, I will not allow in here or either in the chamber, uh, if anyone from the public comes up and addresses us, uh, at here or either at, at the chamber, uh, they will not, as long as I'm president, they will not be able to allow, be allowed to call, uh, a, a, a colleague of mine or, or myself out their name. They will not, they can, they can say, uh, the, the council from the fifth ward, the council from the sixth ward, but I'm not going to allow them to call our name. I want to disallow that. Yeah, that's what, I know that.
But they did.
Well, I know what I said, but I said, I, I said, I'm not going to allow it in order of.
Oh, anymore, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
They kept saying, normally we don't allow that, but.
That was one of the things.
Yeah, because it was a pleasure of the chair, but normally in the past.
I'm not going to allow it, I'm not going to allow it.
Yeah, it was one of the things.
I'm going to make it clear, I, I've had it happen last year, I mean, it happened also last year, uh, I remember someone come up and they called my name out, and matter of fact, I think you guys know the same gentleman I'm talking about, made comments about me, uh, during the time, and no one said a word, uh, so.
It's a pleasure of the chair.
Exactly, but I, I'm just, right, but, uh, councilwoman, what I'm saying is, I'm not going to allow it. I think it's wrong, uh, for, I think it's.
Well, we have never allowed it in the past.
Well, and I, and I concur with that.
Right, councilman?
I concur with that, so I'm going to let you know, I'm making it clear now.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
And I'm going to make it clear next week when we in the, in the chamber, fine? So, no worries. Now, the other thing is, uh.
The other speakers not to call them out.
Yeah, they're not, they're not, I'm not going to allow it. If they do, I'm going to call them out of order, and they continue, I'm going to have the police ask them to pay reboot. Yeah, fine, uh, councilwoman, Mazza, please.
Yeah, I mean, that's the point, uh, over the years, uh, the, no matter who it is from the part of the public, they're going to address the chair, they have to talk to you. And if anybody's attacking any member of the city council like they did last week, I'm called for, for whatever reason, I have the right to rebuttal, but being that I'm well-educated, I wait until the end for you to recognize me.
Yeah, right, right.
Otherwise, would, I even raised my hand.
Yes, you did, yes, you did.
And you didn't, you didn't recognize me, but I waited till the end, but then you got confused with memorial, whatever, that's okay, you're allowed to get confused.
But what I said, what, what I want you to do, though, Frank, if, if we doing the resolution, make our comments thin.
Thin, yeah.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I, I don't know when is the right time for me to do it.
I'm trying to guide you, I'm trying to guide you there.
I understand.
But we're doing the resolution, uh, I've, since I've been here, that's what we use to make our, matter of fact, uh, we use to make our comments, you don't have to comment on the resolution per se, but that's the time you can open up and talk about anybody that made a comment about you, and not, you know, councilwoman, uh, Gonzalez and Councilman Keenan.
I just want to be clear, Mr. President, so what you're saying is, we should not have a rebuttal at the time, uh, during the public speaking, but wait until.
Right.
Resolutions are being discussed.
Right.
And at that point, at some point during the resolutions.
Right, you can make it.
We can make our.
That's correct.
Our point and.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Because what he's saying, that the public session meeting portion is for the public, it's not far as to have a public discourse or debate, and then our meeting is when we do our resolution and stuff, and then you can say, well.
Correct.
This may have nothing to do with the resolution about the vote on, but however.
Exactly, right.
And that's what we have done in the past, like Eddie have done that in others, you know.
So, so I'm trying to set the rules so we know we're on the same page when we get there or here.
Here.
And we continue, yeah, Councilman Keenan.
Yeah, I, I, I know this came up when I was president, and I got jailed at by, by, by friends, that, that basically was an attack against one of our colleagues, and I said, and I'm not going to allow an, an attack against the city council portion. Uh, so I think, uh, I'm hearing what you're saying, Frank, but, but I'm agreeing, uh, with both the past practice and also the efficiency of having the president take the leadership and taking care of those situations, because I can envision a situation where if individual council persons are responding, things could get out of.
It could get out of here, correct, right.
So I, I think that we need to rely on the president.
Right, right.
To take the leadership and handle it.
Right, that's why I don't, I don't think it's a good thing to, to, to say back and forth like councilwoman just said, I, that's what I'm heading with, I don't want us to go back and forth with the public, that's not a good idea.
Absolutely.
Exactly, exactly, so that's why I said, for us to do, as we always have to ask, during the time we have, during the resolution, okay, fair enough? Thank you so much, you guys are so nice.
No, you're not.
Okay, uh, you know, let's go.
Okay, come on, come on. We take another question.
Letter dated March 11, 2013, from the Honorable Mayor advising that subject to confirmation of your honorable body. I herewith reappoint Ms. Winona J. Ankrum Elizabeth to serve as member of the Elizabeth Housing Authority for a five-year term effective April 29, 2013.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 14, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Mid-Atlantic Truck Center Linden for auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March 12, 2013 through March 17, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Associated Auto Parts Linden for auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March 12, 2013 through March 17, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Air-Breaking Equipment Hillside, New Jersey for auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March 12, 2013 through March 17, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $75,000.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Mark Toronto Recreation Company, uh, Spring Lake, New Jersey, for the purchase of playground equipment for Harl Holland Park at a total cost of $86,265.70.
Any comments?
That's why I'm making it up.
Yeah, you're muted, but, okay, uh, uh, councilwoman, I believe, I believe there should be another letter here, I'm not sure, uh, but it should be another letter here, but this, this is coming from the state contract, I believe, uh, and, uh, yes, state contract, and I probably question on state contract, and as soon as we get in, as soon as they do the renovation over there, we're going to install it.
Okay.
Because it's a two, two part, part of this, so I think it's another letter here, I, I hope, I hope it's there, okay?
Is there a line?
I believe so.
Yeah, it should be another one, yeah, I want to comment on that one, so.
I think it is.
You are.
Letter dated March 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Campbell Freightliner LLC Edison, New Jersey, for auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles, including but not limited to brakes, pumps, radiators, and fuel tanks for freightliner trucks for various departments for the period March 12, 2013 through March 17, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Delta Products Sterling, New Jersey, for auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles, including but not limited to screws, nuts, bolts, and tubing cable ties for various departments for the period March 12, 2013 through March 17, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Route 23 Auto Mall, uh, Butler, New Jersey, for auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles, including but not limited to brakes, engine parts, and filters for various departments for the period March 12, 2013 through March 17, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 18, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Aris Painting and Contracting Edison, New Jersey, for the furnishing of painting public buildings for Department of Public Works Division of Public Buildings for a period of two years from the date of the award in an amount not to exceed $100,000 per year for a total of $200,000 for the two-year period.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 18, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to East Coast Emergency Lighting Millstone Township, New Jersey, for the purchase of emergency lighting and installation for the police department for the period March 14, 2013 through March 15, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Any comments? Will you?
Date at March 18, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to accept a sub-grant award of the federal fiscal year 2012 from the Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management Performance Grant Program Funding for the purpose of enhancing the city of Elizabeth's ability to prevent, protect, against, respond to, and recover from acts of terrorism, natural disasters, and other catastrophic events and emergencies in the amount of $10,000.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 19, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract for loss and products in Yardland, Pennsylvania, for auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for the various departments for the period March 12, 2013 through March 17, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $75,000.
Comments?
Why, heavy-duty vehicles should be in good shape after all this contract?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I agree, councilman.
Okay, letter dated March 19, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the purchasing agent to advertise for proprietary seal bills with Elizabeth Fire Department specifications to purchase universal gold phone.
Uh, yes, councilwoman.
Did we just spend another $100,000 up to longer ago for the phone, I mean, a couple months ago? Can you check that, Tony, find out how much we spent three months ago?
Check that.
Because now it's again another $100,000, what are we, oh, just don't.
Do you recall, I don't recall this.
I recall, I didn't check them out, I'm sure.
No, yeah, I understand.
It's a hundred, a hundred thousand.
I don't recall this.
You don't have any airplane crash, God forbid, you know?
Yeah, but, uh, Tony's got to get. Yeah.
See if we are.
Put them on, but, you know, just I like to know how much we actually spent a couple months ago.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check that, and just one comment on all these oil parts and equipment, just recall that these are open-ended contracts, that they're just amounts, and cases need to be spent, they're not actually.
They're not.
Just up to a dollar on it, just one.
Letter dated March 18, 2013, from the Second Assistant City Attorney, requesting that your honorable body consider to rescind and waive all tax, interest, and penalties imposed upon the property located at 10 Cherry Street from January 1, 2008 forward, as well as interest and penalties for the third and fourth quarters of tax year 2007. The Union County Improvement Authority will be responsible for paying up the tax for the third and fourth quarter for tax year 2007.
How many is this, is it, is it owned by the courthouse, where they're building a courthouse?
It's by the courthouse.
You know?
Tony?
That's the one on the corner.
Yeah, I think that's the one on the corner.
The one, they, they.
That's what they're talking about.
Are they going to place the new courthouse?
Hmm?
Where they going to put the new courthouse?
No.
Cannot.
Which one? You're taking the wrong.
You know, on Cherry and on, and the building was right there, they knocked it down.
It used to be like a little gas station, that's, that's what they're talking about.
That's where they're going to put the courthouse.
It used to be the, the last.
That's what they're, that's what they're talking about.
Yeah.
Because we used to have a garage there one time. Yeah. Okay?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
Now, can we go back for that, uh, for the phone, excuse me, excuse me, gentlemen, for the phone? That is being, um, purchased with, um, the support security grant, so it's, it's no cost to the city?
No, that's right.
Okay, so if in fact we did purchase phone in the past, because I don't believe we did, but I'm not always right, um, see if that was also purchased with that grant.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I thank this council?
No, I saw.
Okay.
Letter dated March 19, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that additional grants may be appropriated in 2013 State Fiscal Year Budget by Budget Amendments, Chapter 159.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 19, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that in compliance with the State Fiscal Year 2013 Appropriations Act requires that your honorable body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated actions.
Any comments? Will you?
Letter dated March 19, March 4.
Okay. Where you get that?
I was on a roll with 19, uh, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the Techco Foundation Capital Grant to provide funds for new buildings, existing building repairs, and equipment, specifically to construct a new animal shelter in the city of Elizabeth in an amount not to exceed $2 million with no match requirement.
Any comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, councilwoman?
I hope this comes through fruition, I was talking with the Director, uh, just the other day about the shelter, I mean, the shelter is in need of desperate repair, and, uh, you know, we, we could construct a new one, that would be great.
Well, we have to see if we're going to get the grant.
Yeah, I'm hoping, that's what I'm saying, I'm hoping this can come through, and we can do something, because it's, it's sorely needed over there in the animal shelter.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, they've been neglected for a year.
Mr. President?
Yes, sorry, councilman.
I want to commend the Health Director for her initiative and seeking out and then finding this grant opportunity, that's, uh, it's really a, a good thing, because our, our own city bonds are strapped, so whatever grant money we can work with is great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, good job, all right. I'd like to recognize Councilman Sedanion.
Letter dated March 8, 2013, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to disburse the sum of $24,320 to the Elizabeth Board of Education for the use of Nicholas Murray Butler School Number 23 to offer the SOAR after-school programs in the city of Elizabeth youth ages six to thirteen for the period October 15, 2012, through June 14, 2013.
Any comment? Yeah, just, just quickly, uh, anyone who I've walked by being diseased and a guy that they're subject to, thought looking to, uh, a question came up about trying to create maybe more, I guess, special needs, uh, program, uh, for children, I guess, uh, in a special need, uh, activity, and also just other entities, so that they have kids to, to, I guess, utilize their energy more efficiently than, uh, I told them, I spoke about the SOAR program, uh, but I think it's something, we need to go beyond that a little bit more, if it's possible, uh, and, uh, of course, I know what they talk about, uh, basketball training for kids, I guess, in ninth and 10 years old and younger, so I don't know, we have programs sort of like that, so maybe something we might need to look into, yes, councilwoman?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Um, I'm working, um, with the County of Union and hopefully our recreation department to provide, um, programs for children on the autism spectrum, so I'm hoping, um, this body would support me when I begin to roll out that initiative.
Certainly you got my support, because that's certainly the thing that I've thought about this evening, in my block watch meeting, for that type of, uh, scenario, so once you get that data together, please let us know, and we'll try to support you on that, okay?
Okay.
Back, put it on.
Letter dated March 18, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, recommending the award of a contract to Dynamic Earth LLC Chester, New Jersey, to continue serving as the licensed site remediation professional and to commence soil cleanup and preparation of a remedial action order for the period of March 26, 2013 through March 25, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $1,695,850 unless further authorized by your honorable body.
Any comments?
Yes, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Um, I thought we, I thought there was a developer for the site.
Yes, uh, my understanding, councilwoman, uh, we, we do have a developer, we have to do the initial cleanup, and in return, we're going to get this money back, but, like, Tony, did you understand that?
Should we go get the money back?
Um, if the developer starts to bid, they're going to be, we have a bond ordinance for about $3 million, we'll be expending the money, and then the purchase of the property is in a neighborhood of about $3 million.
I, I.
So, has, at least, they haven't instituted the purchase of the property?
Uh, not yet, still working up for financing.
But I spoke to the, the director this afternoon, and he kind of cheered me that we would, uh, somehow be required to put it back, and whenever we put it, because we've be required to pay him back whenever we put up, because you've got to clean the property up anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, city-owned property, we're going to, when it's sold, it'll be in the neighborhood of $3 million. It'll cover the remediation.
And, you know, and as much as, you know, with the, whatever contamination that we're going to clean up and we build a super, right, but there'll be a win-win situation sometime. You've got to fight for it sometime. But definitely, just much in that area. Yeah, exactly. No, it's the one. Well, see what it is, Councilwoman, that they waited so, waited so long before we did anything to it. We should have never waited this long before we did anything to the property.
Okay, Mr. President, I'm impressed.
Letter dated March 15, 2013 from the Director of Public Works recommending the award of a contract to ATEC Concrete Company, ATEC Edison, New Jersey for site clearing and construction of a proffermentally 20,000-square-foot multipurpose recreational facility complete with escape park, playground area, gaming tables, and gathering areas at the Charles Holland Memorial Playground Escape Park at a cost of $598,322.
There you go, Councilwoman. I thought it was still there, isn't it? Any questions? Any comments?
Letter dated March 18, 2013 from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to James R. Guerra Elizabeth to provide architectural services for the preparation of the preliminary design of renovations to Mickey Walker Recreation Center at a cost not to exceed $7,500 plus reimbursement.
Any comments? I like the comments. I'm so thrilled and happy. You guys remember at the beginning of the year, when I got sworn in, I talked about putting in backup generators and several, several, this all part of that package. And I think we're heading in the right direction to have backup generators at the Mickey Walker Center and the Steve Saffter Center. And no way we can sit back and twiddle our fingers and wait till another disaster hits such as Sandy and we're not prepared. Once the backup generator gets installed, we're going to be much, much prepared for our citizen and especially our citizens around the city. So I'm just really, really see this project moving and hope that we all support this project. Okay, put it on.
Okay. Letter dated February 23, 2013 from the Franco-Mazza Civic Association, Elizabeth, requesting permission to host the St. Vito Festival to be held during the evenings of June 20 through June 23, 2013 from 6:30 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. and to have a St. Vito procession through the streets of Little Italy of Elizabeth heading at the corner of High Street and Fourth Avenue in front of the Validaze Club Hall. Request to have all festival themes, including band of fees played.
Any comments? Don't give away TVs, Councilman. Wave the fee, right, wave the fee, like, you okay, everybody?
Yes, thank you.
Put it on. I want about three TVs.
Come around. I'm making a sign up for you guys.
Okay, Councilman Grover has requested to have placed on the agenda a vanity sign in the block of South Park Street between First and Front Streets in honor of Francis Scott Walker Jr. All right, letter dated March 11, 2013 from City Treasurer committing the treasurer's reported receipts and dispersments for the month of December 2012 in statement of egg balances and investments as of December 31, 2012. Now we have to go on to close session.
Close session.
Whereas the open public meetings, Act 1975, Chapter 231, commit to citizens of a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss a matter falling within the attorney-client privilege, minutes will be kept and ones the matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved and the public be excluded from this meeting. Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cuesta?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedenya?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
Okay, what's around, Councilwoman? Councilwoman Torres?
Yes, Mr. President, I've got a couple of things. There's no parking on Ripley and Third. There's actually signs that says from 8:00 to 4:00 during school hours. I want to know if there's residents that complain that they get tickets and there's actually teachers that have no parking to park their vehicle. I just want to know why the signs are from 8:00 to 4:00 on school days, so that's actually Monday to Friday. Second thing is speeding on Front Street. I would like a study team, Traffic Division, on the front in court right next to the new field that we built. They actually put up a radar, but it's actually going the wrong way, the opposite way, because the speeding happens to go the other way. And last but not least, trucks on First Street. I know you're wanting to fax me something over to Manny, but I definitely, I definitely want to look into that more. I mean, it's just too many. Not making local deliveries, too many trailer trailers.
I thought he passed the, you're here. But they're still coming down there?
But they're still going.
They're still coming down there.
So we need to reinforce them.
We need to have them enforced on both ends of Elizabeth Avenue and
And the other way, both ways, correct. Okay. Okay, so First Street, right? Okay, Councilman Keenan? Councilwoman Mazza?
Pass.
Councilman, uh...
Still request.
All right, all right, all right. Councilwoman Cuesta?
As a person, I want to add to what Councilwoman Torres said before. I also received phone calls from employees at School 13. And I did some further research, and what's happening is that the signs are there on parking at 8:00 to 4:00, as the councilman stated, but they have been there for years. And that, and that rule has never been enforced until two weeks ago. So in other words, the past two weeks, people have been getting tickets, but prior to that, it was not enforced. So that's the concern that residents have and employees on School 13. I think the councilman, you visited today, you found approximately 20 spaces, right?
Correct.
That are really wasted all day long, 8:00 to 4:00, it's all day. So I definitely agree with him that something should be done about it, we should look into it. And I would propose that we, I would propose, you support, Councilman, that we do something immediately while pending the final resolution. I don't think more tickets should be given, and perhaps the signs could be covered or whatever actions we are authorized to take, I think we should take immediately.
Well, he asked for a study, so we got
Well, he asked for a study, but in the meantime, people are going to continue to get tickets.
Can we just ask for a moratorium like we have done
Exactly, that's what I'm asking for. That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, the parts of the city.
Ask for a moratorium for that.
That's what I'm asking for.
For what now, for that section or?
Just for that street, yeah.
Just for a while until the study is conducted.
Yeah, but you asked for Ripley and Third, and you asked for
Oh, the same thing, it's School 13.
Can we just ask for a moratorium on the ticket buying? Do we need to vote on it?
I think you need to vote on it.
How do we do that?
Okay, that's my ordinance, right?
It's my ordinance, that's right.
So you need an ordinance?
We need an order prepared for a moratorium. For how many, how long?
Until the study is conducted and a solution is ready. That's like it's been for the other ones.
I think we did
We did it for a year. We did it for a year, I'm sorry, yeah.
I think we did it for a year.
Yeah, we did it for a year.
So make a moratorium for the study for the no parking area and for the School 13 and First and Third, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
You get a
First and Third.
Third and replicating.
All right, 13.
And I will go and fax you
I said to School 13. To his president.
He's not on, on 16th and 23rd.
That will become effective next week if it passes?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, we're trying to move it for next week.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On First, yeah.
Uh, Councilman Sedenya?
I just had a question, almost on the same line, but I know that, um
Okay, say it, Mr. President.
That was a specific issue with School 13. I know we talked about the possibility of changing the hours because of that, like for the rest of the, on the school district, you were going to look into
Yes, we've been, we've been working on it.
Okay.
We will have something for you by the next meeting. We're just making sure that we have everything that's, has an ordinance, because it's, we thought that it was just, all of them were 8:00 to 4:00, but it turns out that some are 8:00 to 6:00, some are 7:30 to 4:00. It's a hodgepodge, so I want to make sure that we have all of them. We'll distribute a list. If you guys want to add to the list, delete from the list, we can do that and that can be handled in the next.
That's it, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Pass.
Pass. I just got one, Councilman Torres and Councilwoman Mazza, you guys got to help me. I got several calls about possibly putting stop signs, and I don't know which, what the line separate on Sixth Street on Fulton and Sixth by the little playground at that, you were saying, Councilman Torres?
It's between First and Sixth.
And also Franklin on Fulton, I mean, Franklin and Marshall, that's all yours?
It's a borderline, amen or my word.
Okay, where does it stop?
It stops around the middle on Sixth Street. To the left is the Sixth, to the right is the First.
Okay, well, anyway, it probably affect both of you guys, because they're asking for a stop sign probably to be placed on Fulton and Sixth and maybe Franklin and Sixth, because they send, and there's very seldom the police officers that I spoke to. They send people when they get the light from either way, from East, East, East Jersey Street, they fly to Elizabeth Avenue and the opposite way, when they get off of Elizabeth Avenue, they fly towards East Jersey Street. So I told them, I said, we need to do a study and find out how many accidents have taken place on each intersection, and then we'll go for that. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, whatever the study traffic recommends will go along. I personally will go along whatever study is indicating.
Okay.
You've got to save lives, why not?
Councilman Torres, you okay with that?
I agree.
Who asked for a study for Sixth and Fulton and Franklin and Marshall?
And Marshall, okay.
No, wait, Franklin and Marshall?
Or Franklin and Sixth.
Yeah, Franklin and Sixth.
Franklin and Sixth, not, not
Not Marshall, okay.
We don't want to have a real one. Okay, that's it, okay. Motion to adjourn?
Amen.